Before we continue on with the meeting, I'd just like to say a few comments on the agenda this afternoon, okay? There's something new that we've added. So, on here, we definitely will have our regular consent items and our business items, but when it comes to item number four on the agenda, this is when we have been taking comment from the commissioners and also listening out on the public for certain things along with the Fourth Street planning and design. So, just like good neighborhood leaders, we always bring in the people who can make those decisions here, what's going on, and make those decisions and bring the information. So, we are going to have a Public Works Agency member there, and then with code enforcement duties and responsibilities regarding as far as with historic resource, we brought in code enforcement to come in and talk. I asked them to, our executive director of planning, to gather these two departments together to, so that they can hear some of the comments that are going to be what the art, the commissioners, and some of the neighbors have been concerned on. Number six is one that I will be leaving, leading to, and what most of you are here for. I have, in this, I have asked Commissioner Hiddredale and Vice Chair Phil Schaefer to do a little bit of research on historic districts in Orange County, and they're going to be doing that report. We are also going to be discussing at this time some of the duties of the commission, looking at what, how can we approach the city manager in directing us to help with policymakers, which is our city council, with regards to certain things as far as in the purview of this commission? So, we will, I will be leading a discussion, item number six, on that. So, that's what I wanted to give you a little heads up. I know that a lot of you have come in and put for item number six, but any other persons in the audience that would like to talk to us on non-agenda items, please fill out one of this, these slips, on this slip, and we will have you under public comments. So, I hope giving this overview will help you as to where you're going to fit in, and the commission is going to fit in with our meeting today, okay? All right. So, moving on, public comments, and I think Dylan, this is where you want to speak, Dylan?
You may.
Is it Alameda?
Almondroll.
Almondroll.
Yeah, everyone is pronounced, so don't worry about it.
Okay, everyone hear me? Cool.
Yeah. You have three minutes.
Yes. Afternoon, Commissioners. I've been before you guys before. I talked about the Jane Testament House in Floral Park about a year and a half ago. I wanted to make it known to the HRC that myself and my team have completed and are in the process of putting forth the official nomination for Floral Park to be placed on the National Register of Historic Places as a historic district. Paperwork has not, the nomination's not been sent to the state yet. We are waiting on photographs, but it should be done within the next two weeks, if not This is a wonderful project, and given that San安's 150th is this year, it's very poignant. And, yeah, if you have any questions, I can be reached in my office, or many of you have my cellphone, and, yeah, or ask me here.
Thank you so much, Dylan.
Could you give us your cellphone again? Your contact info?
It's, I think it's on the sheet. I think it's on the...
The secretary can give it to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, the secretary.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Also, if the HRC wants a copy of the completed report, I'll be more than happy to transfer that to all of you.
We would love that. I mean, just send it to our secretary. Sarah's not here, but, I'm sorry, you're Cecilia?
Laura.
Laura, okay.
If you can send it to Sarah for now.
For now, on that, and then she will distribute that to us. We really appreciate your time and effort in, in doing that for that most historic area.
Seven hundred twenty-three properties, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Okay. Anyone else under public comments? If not, we will now go to the consent counter. I'm going to take this one at a time because we do have some absences here. Okay, on A is the minutes of the special meeting. Is there a motion to approve that?
I have comments.
On the minutes? Okay, okay.
Um, I have two comments addressing the minutes from the last meeting. One comment has to do with our discussion of demolition processes, and I don't think we talked about tenant apartments before the demolition review process, and I printed from our guidelines a copy of that, and in the future, I'd like to have it addressed. It says demolition prior to demolition permit issuance, and I'd like to know the timeline, what, how many days prior, and then how is it different from other demolition permit issuance in the city or other historic districts, and how is it the same? So, do I give a copy of this to that?
Okay.
Then the other thing I needed to talk about was, on the last page of the minutes, there's a house, seven eighteen South Broadway, and I believe that the architectural style is incorrect, and I have a copy of the page of tenant apartments architecture survey that gives the correct architectural style as custom London Swiss style, a rare example of a sub-style, and I could also supply planning staff with a copy of that, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Hardy. Are there any more addition or comments?
Yes, I have two comments or corrections. I want to note that my last name is spelled incorrectly on this report. There's only one F in Schaefer. And then also, my comment that I made was regarding the West Floral Park Garden Tour, not the Floral Park Garden Tour.
Definitely don't want to...
Just to get that correct.
We definitely...
Well, they're two, they're two different. There's a Floral Park Home Tour and a West Floral Park Garden Tour. They're two different events, so just didn't want confusion over that.
Okay. Any more? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes with the additional comments?
I'll make a motion.
Moved by Commissioner Hardy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner, Vice Chair Schaefer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Not voting? Okay, okay. Motion carried eight with, with one absence of Commissioner Escheri. I forgot her last name. Ramos, Ramos, okay. Commissioner Ramos, okay. Next, going through the consent, we will now excuse the absence of Commissioner Ramos. Sarah, motion?
Do we know where she is? Because she's said...
Since, since our secretary isn't here, we probably can't give you that information in case you might have called to Sarah.
Okay. We can excuse her now and then resend it at the end of the meeting. How's that? Would you like that, or wait?
Can we wait in case she comes in late?
Seems premature.
Okay. We'll come back to B, okay? All right. Now, item number C on the consent is the Historic Property Preservation Agreement, twenty nineteen dash oh one Mills Act for the property located at twenty-one twelve North Flower Street, Strategic Plant. Is there a motion for that one?
So, moved?
Moved by Vice Chair Schaefer, second by Commissioner Wen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed, eight to, eight to one with the absence of Commissioner Ramos. Okay. Moving on, the next item is item number two. I'm sorry, one more. Commissioner, communication disclosures, any communication disclosures? None? Okay, all right. Now, we will move to the administrative calendar, which is the election of the officers for the term two thousand nineteen to twenty. Okay. Okay, the floor is now open for nominations for chairpersons. Are there any nominations? Commissioner Leo.
I'd like to nominate Alberta Christie for chair.
Okay. Commissioner Wen?
I'd also like to nominate Alberta Christie for chair.
Thank you. Is, are there any more nominations for chair? Okay, with that, is there a motion to close the nominations?
I'd like to make a motion to close nominations for chair and take a vote.
Moved by Commissioner Leo, second by Commissioner Wen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carry eight to one with Ramos absent. All those in favor of Alberta Christie to be chair, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries eight, eight, Commissioners, aye, and one with Ramos absent. Now, the floor is open for nominations for vice chair. Are there nominations?
I would like to nominate Commissioner Rush as vice chair.
Commissioner Rush?
I'd like to nominate Phil Schaefer.
Phil Schaefer? Commissioner Vice Chair Schaefer. Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Is there a motion to close the floor?
I can make a motion to close the floor.
Close the nominations? Okay. All those in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that passes eight with one Commissioner Ramos absent. Okay, take this in order. All those in favor of Commissioner Rush to be vice chair, say aye.
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 All those in favor of Commissioner Schaefer as vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All, raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five. Five, okay? And with that, congratulations, Vice Chair Schaefer.
Congratulations to you as well.
Okay, thank you so much. Moving on, the business calendar. Thank you, guys, for the support. Okay, now is the time and place for public hearing on item number two for historic exterior modification application number twenty eighteen dash twenty-four to allow exterior modifications to the property located at twenty-four fifteenth North Bonnie Bray. The staff will now provide presentation. Hi.
Hi, good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This first item for your consideration is a request to permit exterior modifications to the historic structure located at twenty-four fifteenth North Bonnie Bray. This item is a continued item from the January twenty-fourth HRC meeting. Considering that the item was continued for two meetings, we did notice the meeting again. The property is located on the north side of Bonnie Bray, between Bonnie Bray and Bentonway in the Floral Park neighborhood. The property is known as the Judge Allen House, and it's individually listed as number five hundred and sixty-eight on the Santa Ana Register of Historic Properties, and it's categorized as key. The Henderson, excuse me, the Judge Allen House has distinctive architectural features of the minimal traditional colonial revival style, and it was constructed in nineteen twenty-seven. Character defining features of the Judge Allen House include its massing, all of the exterior materials, its roof configuration, the original windows, the front-facing chimney, and the distinctive front door. The proposed exterior modifications include the removal of a non-original second-floor addition, which is approximately a hundred and twenty square feet in size, and which was a result of a previously enclosed balcony. The applicant proposes to rebuild the second-floor area with an additional, without adding any additional square footage. However, the rebuilt area would incorporate a shed-style roof extending towards the rear over the master bedroom. In addition, the applicant proposes to construct a new second-story balcony, although not within the purview of the Historic Resources Commission, the new design also includes an interior remodel of the second-floor master bedroom and interior remodel of the first-floor These next slides provide an overview of the proposed work. You can see on the proposed site plan that the work is isolated towards the rear of the property. On the next slide, you can see the existing and proposed floor plan, showing the area of the addition and a new balcony along the north rear elevation. And these are some elevations. This is the east elevation of the proposed and the existing, to give the commission an understanding of the area that's being affected. Again, this would be towards the rear. This slide shows the west elevation. The north elevation. The proposed exterior modifications are considered a rehab project, and as such were evaluated against the TANQ criteria for the Secretary of Interior standards. Staff determined that the project complies with these standards. The analysis found that the proposed addition would be compatible and consistent with the existing architectural elements that reflect their original style. By localizing the scope of work towards the rear of the elevation and differentiating the new work from the old, the property will maintain its historic and character-defining That concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Does the commission have any questions of staff?
I have one question. Can you go back to some of the original plot pictures? Keep going. Right there. What is the part at the red, at the bottom, right next to where it says proposed? Where is that saying another view?
It's not in another view because it's an interior remodel. It's like an additional storage area, but it's not affecting the exterior modification. Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? No? Thank you, Pedro. Now, Mr. ...
Alberta, I have one question. What, what will the exterior materials be? I mean, the siding?
The materials are proposed to be the same siding as the existing property, which is the horizontal siding. I forget exactly what the name of it is, but it's supposed to match the existing, slightly differentiate to, to have that new and the, and the old differentiated though. Horizontal clapwood siding, there you go. I do have, I do have the applicant here today, Mr. Hoffman, and I'm not sure, Mr. Hoffman, do you have your architect with you today?
No.
Okay, so, Mr. Hoffman, applicants are here if they have any, if the commission has any questions for them. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Pedro. Now, at this time, with Craig Grimliffe, but Hoffman like to address the commission.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Craig Hoffman. I'm here with my wife, Beth. Congratulations on your chairmanship. Don't really have anything to add to the staff report other than to request your approval of our exterior modification. In answer to the question, the area that is extending the closet, there's a, existing closet that's over the living room, and we're just going to sort of formalize it. It was done not really to code, so we're going to just replace it with something which is consistent with code. And the siding is all horizontal redwood siding. Any other questions?
Thank you. Any question? No?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. Okay. Madam Secretary, do we have any written communications?
No written communications for this item.
Thank you so much. Okay. I now open, the public hearing is now open with regards to this project. Is there anyone from the public that would address, would like to address item number two for this historic exterior modification? Hearing none, and close the public hearing, and now I'd like to bring it back to the commission for comments or a motion. Don't all speak at one time. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll, I'll make the motion. I move that we approve the adopt a resolution of the Historic Resource Commission of the City of Santa Ana approving the certificate of appropriateness for the property located at twenty-four fifteen North Bonnie Bray, historic exterior modification application number two thousand eighteen dash twenty-four, and that's on the Judge Allen House modification.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Who's, who's that? Commissioner Verashki, we'll get you, party. Okay, moved by Vice Chair Schaefer, seconded by Commissioner Verashki. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Our motion carries. Are there any with the absence of Commissioner Ramos? Congratulations. Thank you so much for your attention. Now, I must tell you, because they added a new line for me to tell you. Please note, the decision of the commission is final unless you appeal within ten days. So, I don't think you're going to appeal, right? But I had to, they've added this new line to my script, okay? But congratulations again. Okay, now, have to do this. Now is the time and place for the public hearing on item number three for historic exterior modification application number twenty nineteen dash six to allow exterior modifications to the property located at twenty forty-three North Victoria Drive. And staff will now do the presentation.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. This next item is a request to permit exterior modifications to the historic structure located at twenty forty-three North Victoria Drive. The subject property is located on the east side of Victoria Drive in the Floral Park The property is known as the Aaron's House, and it's individually listed as number six hundred and nine on the Santa Ana Register of Historic Properties, and it's categorized as key. The Aaron's House has distinctive architectural features of the colonial revival style with the French Regency variant, and it was built in nineteen forty-nine. Nineteen forty-nine listed as key in two thousand fifteen, okay. Character defining features of the Aaron's House include its materials and finishes, the cross-gabled roof configuration and detailing, the casement windows and architectural details such as the diamond pattern windows, the side lights, the dormers, and the finestration The proposed exterior modifications include a one hundred and sixty-square-foot expansion to the existing kitchen and an interior remodel. In order to accommodate the expansion, the applicant is proposing to demolish approximately twenty-seven lineal feet of the southern right elevation and fifteen lineal feet of the east rear elevation, both along the first floor. As part of demolition, the applicant would also demolish an existing bay window, a casement window, and a nonoriginal garden window. Furthermore, the applicant would be removing from the rear elevation an existing trellis as well as an existing wood French door with a single light. The proposed work would expand the southern right elevation towards the southern property line. The expansion area would incorporate one new steel casement window. In addition, three new steel windows along the southern right elevation are proposed, and two new French wood doors with a single light along the east rear elevation would be incorporated. The new addition would incorporate a flat roof with a parapet edge, which will incorporate the existing horizontal band, which defines the change in material from stucco to wood siding in the existing residence. Lastly, in order to distinguish the new addition from the existing, the proposed addition will incorporate a smooth stucco finish, and the windows will be slightly differentiated with sash, sash profiles. Again, this next slide provides an overview of the proposed work. You can see on the site plan here that the work is isolated towards the southern end, southern end of the property. On the next slide, you can see the floor plans proposed, as you can see the, the addition asset, proposing to expand that kitchen area towards the southern property line to accommodate the kitchen expansion. This provides the commission a view of the north elevation, the south elevation, and this is going to be the west front elevation. You can see that on the proposed elevation, there's that bay window and then the, excuse me, the existing elevation, there's that bay window, and the proposed elevation is showing the expansion area. And this shows the east rear elevation. These proposed exterior modifications are also considered a rehab project, and as such were evaluated against the TANQ standards of the Secretary of Interior. Staff determined that the project complies with these standards. The analysis found that the proposed addition would be compatible and consistent with architectural elements without detracting from the French variant style that it has. The addition is set back far enough on the primary elevation and is subordinate to the massing of the, the existing primary residence, that it meets the standards as outlined in the Secretary of Interior standards. That concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you so much. Does the commission have any questions for staff? Thank you, Pedro. Okay, with the applicant, I'd like to speak at this time, that is, is it Rein, Reinhardt? Reinberger?
It's Reinberger.
Okay, thanks.
I just want to say thank you for considering it. We've thought about it for about five years since we moved in. It's a skinny galley kitchen, and it was built by an elderly couple with no children, and we have three children, so we really want to make room for ourselves without detracting from the existing historic value. So, I think this is kind of the most compatible way, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you so much. Okay. Madam Secretary, have we received any commu, written communication?
No written communication received on item three.
Okay, fine. I now would like to open the public hearing now on item number three for historic exterior modification application number twenty nineteen dash six to allow the exterior modification to the property located at twenty forty-three North Victoria Drive. At this time, if anybody in the public would like to speak on this item? Seeing none and hearing, I now declare the public hearing closed. I now want to bring it back to the commission for a decision. Or comments?
I just have a couple of comments. Number one, I see Jane Lewis in the audience, so that means she was the architect on this, and she's done several historic renovations in the neighborhood, and they're always carefully done, and she does great work, so thank you for being a part of this project. Also, I believe, if my memory serves me correctly, prior to this home being listed on the registry, there was a similar trellis, and I'm not sure if the trellis that's being removed was original because one had been added in the front of the house, and that was removed previously prior to the house being listed, so that it would be more original. So, I just wanted to thank the homeowner for doing that earlier project, and wanted to make sure the commission remembered that, because we have some newer people on the commission that wouldn't remember maybe, or have known that.
Okay. Any other comments? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Commissioner Hardy?
To adopt a resolution, a resolution of the Historic Resources Commission of the City of Santa Ana approving the certificate of appropriateness for the property located at two zero four three North Victoria Drive, historic exterior modification application number two zero one nine dash zero six.
Second. Thank you. Is there a second?
Can I, can I correct the address? We're on item three, and that's two zero four three North Victoria Drive?
Two zero four three? Mm-hmm. That's correct?
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Moved by Commissioner Hardy. Okay, moved by Commissioner Hardy, seconded by Commissioner Leo. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? There you go. Motion passes eight with one absence from Commissioner Ramos. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Thank you. To both families on the items, you know, this is our 150th anniversary and for you to maintain, you know, the integrity of your property to represent the time and period that this house was built, we really appreciate, especially during this time of the year. So thank you so much. And please note, I'm sorry, this was just added to my today, in case you disapprove of our decision, decision of the commission is final unless appeal within 10 days. Okay? Thank you. Okay, now that concludes the public hearing. We will now move to the report section of the agenda. First item to consider is agenda item number four, which is an update on the downtown planters with the Joe Muesel design that are being impacted by the Orange OC Streetcar. And we have Jason. And that is, Jason, what's your last name?
Good afternoon. My name's William Galvez.
Oh, my God.
Jason Gabriel is sitting right over there, but...
Thanks, Lisa.
He's one of the yellow shirts.
Lisa, tell me.
No, William wasn't here yet.
Okay, William, hi, how are you?
Good afternoon.
I thought I'm going to ask Jason, yeah, okay.
Madam Chair and members of the Historic Resources Commission, I'm going to give you a brief presentation on the status of the planters along Fourth Street that are being impacted by the OC Streetcars. So Sean is kind enough to load this for me and I guess I'm ready to go here. Just a brief background, the original planters were installed on Fourth Street in 1983 and they were primarily a built up erection. It was constructed on site. They presented issues with safety and possibly being able to hide behind the planters. You can't really tell from the picture there, but it's right behind that truck that's crossing Fourth Street and it's quite bulky and large. And after 18 years of just having operational issues with the planter, we changed the planters by installing 34 planters in the downtown area in two phases. Fifteen planters were installed in 2002 primarily in the focus of the downtown between Broadway and Main on Fourth Street. And then we followed that up with 19 planters installed on Fourth Street and that was on either edge from on the Ross side and on the French street side. The background of the planters themselves, and this is research that I have to thank Sean Thomas for, it was designed by artist Joseph Musso. It appears that it was a 2D sketch and so what we did is we contracted Dura Art Stone to create a mold from that sketch. And you can see the picture on the right is the mold that was, that was created. And then we were able to replicate castings from that mold. And of course, again, that came from the original sketch. These are pictures of the planters that they look like they're all one piece and then you have the moldings, excuse me, the castings that are glued onto or cemented onto the, to the one piece planter. And you can see several of them there. Now, this is just a map showing the OC Streetcar. And I highlighted it, I know the map is quite small, but that little highlighted area is Fourth Street and of course, that's why we're here talking about the planters that are being impacted by the, by the streetcar. So the, the planter disposition is that when the streetcar was designed, we intended to remove 27 planters and only have seven preserved because the downtown and the HRC and just other community members desire to keep as many planters as possible, we came back with a revised plan where we're only going to be removing 23 and we can preserve 11. And of course, that's barring any unforeseen conditions. When you're under construction, sometimes things occur that are beyond, you know, the information you have. So we're hoping to at least preserve 11. The city manager contacted me and she wanted me to get plugged in to see if there was anything more that we could do. This map shows the, the planters that are going to be protected and the ones that are going to be removed. And so if you take a little count there, starting at the upper left is where Ross starts, Ross and Fourth. And as you move over to the right, you're going in the eastbound direction. So you go to Birch, Broadway, Sycamore, Main, Bush, Spurgeon, and ending with French. And so we color coded the ones that are going to be protected and so I count 11 that are going to be protected from that map. We can certainly sit down with you with a larger set of plans, but, but we, we have designated 11 to be preserved. So the actual artwork from the 11 planters that will be protected, because they're four-sided planters, we have 44 castings in total that will be preserved. And I went out to the field to inspect the planters myself. I was hoping that maybe we could saw cut and we can somehow preserve some of those castings from the planters that are, that are going to be removed. Once I looked at the as builts, the pictures and the actual field conditions, the planters are all one piece. They've been there for quite some time with all the growth and probably some of the cracking that the, even though it's reinforced concrete, some of the cracking, I'm assuming it's reinforced concrete, some of the cracking that occurs as soon as you try to lift those, those planters, they may fall apart. So we're working with Walsh. Walsh is the contractor that works for OCTA on the streetcars. So we would have to engage our own contractor to try to preserve any of the planters that are going to be removed. So at this point, we're still working on maybe a plan where we can preserve some of the ones that, that are scheduled to be removed. But the good news, and I think this is great, the castings can be replicated from the, from a new mold that's made from the sketch from the original artwork. That's, that's one way to replicate planters in the future. The other way would be to make a mold from an existing planter. We can make a mold directly from some of the artwork that's on an existing planter and we can use that mold to replicate the future castings for future planters if that's what the city desires. So there's a little bit of good news. I did have Sean contact the company, Dura Art Stone, I think it was, to see if we have the original casting which is that picture there on the right, bottom right. That would have been fantastic because if we had that mold, we're, we're good to go. Unfortunately, they don't have that mold anymore, so we would have to make one. And again, we can make one two ways. We can make one from the, from the sketch on the lower left or we can make one from an existing planter. Nonetheless, when we are scheduled to remove those planters, I, I don't want to be held responsible for a planter being pulled out, falling apart, but I'm still going to have our, our staff on the side with some equipment to see if there's something that we can do with the planter as it's being pulled out. We don't have a whole lot of space at the yard to, to keep these planters if we're able to save one, but at least I wanted to let you know that I'm going to be there and we're going to try. And so at this point, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to hear any comments. And again, I have Jason Gabriel and Sean Thomas of Public Works. We're ready to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? I do. Okay, William, can you go back to where you had the slide where you had the red and the green?
Oh, yes.
That was going to be protected and what was not? Okay. Why is it, I, I'm sorry, I can't see even with these glasses, the one that has all red, do they have all red at the bottom there? Why aren't those being, at least some of them being protected? I don't know what street that is.
So, so let's see, just so that we're, we're talking about the same thing at Ross?
No, no, it's, it's, what's, what's the bottom?
Fourth Street.
That one there?
Yes.
It's all red on Fourth Street.
Okay. So we have none that you can protect or make another mold of?
Yeah, so the, you see the majority of the red are on the bottom of the street which is the south side of the street. That's because the streetcar is running along that side of the street. So that's where all the majority of the improvements for the streetcar are going to be and that's why the planters wouldn't work with, with the improvements because there's going to be platforms, there's, you know, the track, the parking is, you know, those things are going to be modified, so...
And the vibration too, right?
Right, and the majority of the, the planters that we can save is on the north side for that reason. Some of the corners to make ADA improvements are being impacted, so sometimes we can't save all of them on the north side. But we did come back and ask OCTA, is there any way you can save any more? We, we looked at all the planter locations again and we're able to secure four more. And that's how we arrived at the 11 ultimately.
So you can't squeeze four more in there?
We, you know, we already...
Up on the top?
Yeah.
That, go back up? We got there along, along that, that area, you can't squeeze a group?
Yeah, so everything on the...
At least two or three?
Yeah, I mean, we, we honestly, we looked at every single one individually. We pleaded with OCTA and, and we had them basically prove to us why they absolutely cannot save any more than, than we're saving, you know? But the good thing is that we are saving 11 and if, you know, the artwork, it's, it's really, the sketch is the original art, the rest of it is duplicated, you know, on every planter. So we are saving, there are going to be 44 versions of that exact same piece of casting that was implemented in 2007, so that's going to be there.
So that in the future, these castings currently, the new ones that we have, I mean, they're going to last a lot longer, right? And you're going to keep those, right? With the new materials and new technology that they have?
So we're not creating new castings. So there's just...
Or replica, replicas is what I'm...
Yeah, those replicas are going to be there, they're, they're going to stay in place. There's 11 of them that are remaining.
I'm just talking about in future years, 10 years down the road, that you have something that you're going to preserve so that in replacement due to wear and tear, an earthquake or whatever might happen, that you can just go back in?
Oh, definitely, yeah. Since we have this original sketch and we also have the, the original ones that are going to remain in place, if we ever need to duplicate or create, replace any of these, we can always do that by creating another cast of that artwork.
Okay, so we do have that.
Alberta, can I ask a question? I'm confused. You say you're saving 44.
It's 44 because we're saving 11 planters. Each planter has the exact same mold on it four times. So that there's 44 pieces of art that are being saved.
So ideally, because you're removing 11, you're going to take the lid off, saw cut the sides, I assume that's what you're going to do?
No, we're, we're removing 23 planters. 11 are remaining, so what we're saying is that since there's 11 remaining in place that we're not touching, there's 44 pieces of that art that are going to remain intact. Out of the 23 that we're removing, we're, as William mentioned, we're going to, you know, look into seeing the possibility of trying to cut out additional pieces, but based on field inspection and, you know, reports from several people that we're saying that, they're saying that it's going to be very difficult to do that, the way that it's constructed right now, but nonetheless, we are going to try. But the 11 planters and the 44 pieces of art that we're referring to are the ones that are in green over there.
Yeah. So the ones that are being removed, you're going to make your best effort to salvage those. They may completely fall apart, you're saying. Of course, you'll know, you'll have a pretty good idea when you take one out, what your experience is going to be. And, and then assuming a third of them, half of them, there's, these panels are salvageable, you're going to what, store those in the corporate yard or what?
Well, the, the planters are one piece, so as soon as we pull them up, if the planter falls apart, obviously that's, you know, we're going to have to just demolition those and those are gone. If, if there is a planter that we're able to save, we'll keep that at the yard. What, the, part of the confusion is that I probably, this is my fault, I thought that these planters were manufactured on site and I had the brilliant idea to go out there and perhaps saw cut out the art pieces. You can't do that. I didn't realize that it's all one piece. It's one planter with four artwork moldings cemented on. So that, my idea is not going to work.
Well, why, why couldn't you saw cut in place? Why couldn't you saw cut the four sides of the planter?
That, that would, that would be a major undertaking because the, the concrete's quite thick. And then the other is that we can duplicate, we can replicate the artwork from the original...
Cheaper than you can saw cut?
Yes, and we can make a mold out of the existing artwork from an existing planter and we would make sure that we keep that mold so that these can be casted and replicated into the future however long.
So worst case scenario, or maybe best case, so you hoist these suckers up and suppose three quarters of them don't fall apart, then what?
Well, we're going to have to figure out how many we can keep at the yard in the best case scenario. And so I'll be trying to coordinate to see if there's an area in the yard that we can keep one of these.
I mean, I realize you, you can't wave a wand and make this happen, but if any of that was to occur, I mean, a great spot for them would be perhaps on street corners on South Main which desperately needs enhancements to its streetscape. The city has been installing roundabouts to its traffic mitigation. These would be a perfect piece of public art planted in the center of these roundabouts, just a suggestion, but...
Yeah, okay. Well, I, I am involved in the South Main project, so that's a good suggestion. Thank you.
And, and there you go, saving some more of the 23, right? There you go. Okay, any other comments?
Yes, I have a comment.
Commissioner Hardy?
I understand that you're keeping, trying to keep 11. So are there any plans moving forward to find locations to replicate these planters and then add them as part of the, back on to Fourth Street, incorporate it into the
The streetcar plans don't call for, for any of that. We'd have to follow up maybe after the streetcar's constructed to see if we can master plan some hardscape and landscaping to enhance our downtown. So at this point, no.
So that would come later?
Yes.
And so is this design being used anywhere else? Is it incorporated in any of the streetcar platforms or trash receptacles or benches or?
I don't believe so.
Or is this just, yeah, we're left with the 11 hopefully?
We're left with the 11. At this moment, there is no, you know, in the current plans, there is no plan to incorporate those, but that doesn't mean, that doesn't preclude it from ever happening in the future. The key thing that we found, thanks to, you know, all of this, is that we found the original design. So that's memorialized, that's the, you know, so at, at the city's want at any point, we can always incorporate that design in anything around the city. We just have, we have his original design, so it doesn't preclude us from any of that in the future.
So perhaps a good call on that in the future. Great. Thank you.
We really appreciate you, you know, as you're listening to the commissioner's comments, now taking, you know, some of our suggestions as, you know, enhancing the beauty of our city by incorporating some of these designs. So we thank you for coming and listening to us and answering questions. Cynthia, I'm sorry.
Can you tell me how much it is just the cost for one planter?
The cost to...
Make a planter?
To make a planter? I don't have, I don't have that because, you know, we, in this project, we're not making any planters, so I don't, I wasn't able to find the... I wasn't able to find the original cost back in two thousand and seven when we put it in. But I know the cost to, you know, I got some rough quotes, just to, to attempt to try and, you know...
Recreate?
To remove one of these existing blocks of castings is over three thousand dollars, just to, just to try. And there's no guarantee that it would come out.
Per planter?
No, per side of a planter. However, like a mold can be created for much less than that, which will be...
Are you talking about twelve thousand dollars then, to remove?
Just to remove.
From each planter?
To attempt to try and save a planter, it would probably be around twelve thousand for each planter.
And?
And, and there wouldn't be any guaran, nobody's, nobody would be willing to guarantee the success of it.
And with the mold that you have?
But the mold, I mean, we don't have the mold, but we have the, the design. A mold, it will be a few thousand dollars to create a mold, which then can be used to replicate as many of these as we want. As far as, we're talking about the art itself, nothing's unique about the planter, but the art on the planter, that's the, that's the only piece, so...
The, the first one costs the most. After that, the cost goes down, you know?
It still just seems pretty extreme right now for, where we are as a city to focus on this, but thank you, appreciate it.
Any other comments?
I just had one question. Out of, so the eleven's a safe number, we're not going below that at this point? As of today, we're at eleven?
Well, it's eleven barring any unforeseen conditions. They, but most likely it'll be eleven. It was seven originally, which we're increasing it to eleven. That's, again, we have to caveat that with...
Are any of those eleven from the original installation?
Yes, yes, some of them are.
Some of them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Rush?
Well, I was just gonna say that this is a, this ought to be a lesson to, to Orange County Transportation Authority and the city in that initially, these were just gonna be torn out, thrown away. Nobody was gonna, nobody was gonna make any effort whatsoever to salvage them. It was viewed that simply because these were installed in, in the early two thousands, that they're not historic, they have no cultural or, or historical or aesthetic value, and we're just gonna trash them and move on. And that's unfortunate, but I'm glad that this got, this got turned around. But I, I hope that going forward, that with regard to the streetcar project and other projects that will be embarked upon by the city, that they will not take such a cavalier view, that just because something is not fifty years old, which by the way, is not a hard number. That's a suggestion from the National Park Service, that's not cast and concrete. So, anyway, that's all I have.
Vice Chair?
Just had one comment. I wanna thank Commissioner Rush for bringing this to all of our attention originally, 'cause I had no idea that was gonna happen. But it, just on the chance that these, you know, separate off the ground, stay intact, you've got several that are in nice condition, it'd be great for the planning staff to pay attention to that and look for opportunities to reuse those. I know we have pedestrian space on Second Street, and I think it's maybe Spurgeon, that's by the east end. I mean, there's several public areas that perhaps some of these could be reused in. And I love the roundabout idea, I think that's great. It'll keep all the cheaters from going straight through.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it. Now, moving on, on the update on item number five. From our favorite code enforcement officers, Avril Nunez. I guess you never thought you'd be before a Historic Resource Commission?
Right. Just kidding. Thank you, Chair, Commissioner. And this is my presentation, very brief. I was asked to present or process regarding response to historic problem concerns. Essentially, we, we prioritize historic complaints from, from neighborhoods that are identified as historic, and in this case, as the nineteen and S D forty, French Park in Hennessy Park neighborhood. And at the same time, any property that's identified and in our property information network, Safe and, as historic. So like any hazardous conditions, like sewage spills or anything that might cause dangers to life and limb, we respond to historic concerns, same day response within twenty-four hours. So for us, we do prioritize that type of complaint. Like in all typical complaints, they can call our number, seven one four six six seven two seven eight zero, which is the general code enforcement complaint, or you can submit a complaint through our website. Now, before we had the updated website, there was a demarking within the code enforcement, where we had a, a link to historic property access. I verified yesterday, and when we updated, it was removed. So we'll try to do that ASAP to make sure that if people do key in to the code enforcement, CDFSN on our website complaint, that they can key in directly to a historic link. So we get that complaint prioritized.
What's that number again?
Six six seven two seven eight zero. And between eight and four, it's manned twenty-four seven, excuse me, it's covered twenty-four seven. I mean, from eight to four, excuse me. And we do have voicemail.
I like that.
Yeah, you like that, Tim, Commissioner. So I'm, yeah, I'm free to answer any questions if need be. Very concise, very brief.
All right, this was an issue that was brought up at our previous meetings with regard to code enforcement on historic property. Any questions or concern?
So I have a comment. I know you said in those special districts, which are historic neighborhoods.
Right.
However, I think some of our concerns have been on individual properties that are not in a district, but are registered historic, and some of the modifications or work that we see going on, perhaps somebody replacing windows, things like that. So how, how is that, can you walk us through that process? If I call and say, hey, I see something happening in the past at the Maharaji House, for example, I'm an Elio Trope in Santa Clara, illegal work?
So to the extent, and I understand that's your item number six on your agenda. So I think you're gonna expand on the discussion when you come to that type of, at least policy oriented. With any type of complaint regarding work done without permits, right? So we try to prioritize that, even if it's not this historic sense of a property or neighborhood. If, if somebody calls our, our command central or complaint line, and they say they're doing work without permits, our staff is trained to verify first if permits have been obtained. If not, we dispatch staff to issue a stop work notice. That's the key. The key is to notify the property owner that if they're doing certain work that requires permit, they don't continue, and so we try to put them into the process right away. This would address some of that type of, of concerns. If, though, people call in, and we verify that permits have been obtained, that means they were approved through planning, they obtained the building structural permits, then we try to verify, let the person calling, that they can call the building department, and we refer those type of concerns to the building department. At that point, the building safety inspector should be able to verify if the, in this case, like you suggested, the, the windows were changed, or approved, and being worked on for approved plans.
To follow up on that, I think your question was for historical homes. So our permitting system has a tracking process where if the homes are protected, that has gone through the designation process, we do note in the file. So if, and when the code enforcement officer check on the property with the building division, if there's permit, then they obviously have gone through their process, they have gone through the committee, a commission review, got the approval, and got the planning department approval. But if they didn't, work would stop, and they would be enforced upon, and they would have to come in and go through the process of obtaining approval or restoring the property back to its original condition. So that, I think, addresses the issue of when someone's doing work on historically designated houses.
I think sometimes the problems occur like on weekends and after hours, when people are doing their own work without a permit, that sort of thing. So that's, you know, a little alarming. You know the Maharaji House, they did their, they put a big tarp up, and then replaced the windows with vinyl windows underneath. I mean, after they tore out all the steel windows that were there, and we still have that, it's kind of a black mark, I think, on, on that beautiful historic property. So that's just a glaring example, but there are, you know, several that we've all witnessed and seen happen throughout the city.
Well, and the other issue, if I may add, we've got Henninger Park and French Park, which are registered historic districts, one national, one local. Beyond that, we have at least six historically sensitive neighborhoods, and a lot of problems happen there. And, you know, so you figure you've got maybe twelve hundred houses that are protected between Henninger Park and French Park, because they're in registered historic districts, but you've got thousands that are in these six other neighborhoods that are historically sensitive, that, you know, that, that they, they deserve some, some special attention as well. So, and I suspect we're gonna talk about that later, but...
We're good?
Okay, thank you, thank you for coming, Alver. Okay, the big item, number six is next, okay? This is the item where, you know, you are in the process of making recommendations to city council and updating historic related fees. Nobody's here for fees, right?
No, Madam Chair, we did receive three comments in response to this item, and I'll distribute them now.
Okay. Okay, moving on. Before, before we get to the input from the public, as I said, I had assigned a task to Vice Chair Schaefer and Commissioner Larry Hithardale to research what the fees were on historic properties in certain cities just in Orange County. I didn't go to LA County or Altwood, but what, like oranges, were orange, okay? And I would like for them at this time to report on the cities about their fees, which we will be discussing and taking your input to our meeting on Wednesday at ten o'clock with the new city manager. So, Commissioner Hithardale?
Yes, well, I got in contact with three different cities, Tustin, Orange, and Fullerton. And I think that they, they all seem to have things somewhat different. Tustin has no local historic register. However, they do have a survey of properties that they consider historic. For Mills Act was a five hundred fee, five hundred dollar fee for application, there's no charge for maintenance or periodic surveys. Obviously, there's no fee for being listed on the local historic register, because there is no local historic register. So the only fee they ask for the Mills Act is five hundred dollars. Orange, see, they, basically, Orange is much more focused on, on the historic area of Orange. They have two districts, the plaza, national historic district, which is a few blocks around the plaza. And then they have another national registered historic district on the Old Town. That includes the plaza and maybe about higher six blocks beyond their plaza area on either side. And then they have a local historic district, the, the Orange, the Old Town, and that's just about the same as the national registered district for the Old Town. So my understanding is that any structure within any of those districts is eligible to apply for the Mills Act. And their, the fee for that's a thousand dollars. And then they charge thirty dollars a year for maintenance and for the periodic inspections. If a property owner outside of that central area wants to apply for Mills Act, then the property owner would actually hire a consultant and come in with a report that says their structure is historic. And so that would be, if the property was expensed, and presumably the property would also pay a thousand dollars. One thing, I think it's very helpful in Orange, they do have on their website a, an interactive map of historic districts, historic structures, made up five or six only, historic, Mills Act sites that are outside of that historic district. Inside of the system, they, they are very quickly custom. They have a star located, and when you click on the star, it brings information about the structure. That is something, that's not related to the fee issue really, but I think it's gonna be very helpful. It'd be more helpful to say an add in for Orange, because they have more dispersed historic sites and Mills Act properties. It'd be very helpful to be able to see exactly where they are. I might say, and I think that the notion of having a kind of more central direction, because the top-down approach to this, as well as the bottom-up self-nominations, is also good. And I think we have some of the map like that, so they can look at, say, hey, we've got a historic area over here, we don't have, we have no designated structures. Well, we have only one or only two that would tell us where we wanna invest some central, central, the central leaning direction. That's kind of a sidebar. Fullerton, again, they're a very different custom, where we're having a local register. But they do have a Mills Act. In Fullerton, they don't participate in Mills Act at all. But they do have, in their general plan, they list properties which are on the national, state, or local register. So they do a local register. Self-nominations make up a bulk of the requests for the local register. But the Fuller Heritage, which is a historic association, can also nominate with the consent of property owner. And the fee for listing is one thousand, three dollars and sixty cents. So they calculate it in some way, but I'm not sure what it is, but we have very precise amount that they, and they propose for local nominations to local register.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Hithardale, Commissioner Schaefer, please.
Yes, so I checked with San Clemente and Anaheim, so I'll do San Clemente first. They have, they, so far, they've had no self-nominations in San Clemente. But they did hire a consultant to go through the city and identify properties that they think should be on the historic registry. So because they don't have self-nominations, and it's been a city-run program, there are no fees for a homeowner to pay to get on the registry or to get the Mills Act in San Clemente. They are open to the idea of people doing a self-nomination, they just haven't had any of those yet. So I think they just haven't invented a way to handle it at this point. So San Clemente seems to have some properties on, and they're, they're pretty low-key in how they're handling that. They haven't had a huge demand there. In Anaheim, it's a very different story. They, also, they don't charge, in Anaheim, there's zero fee to be on the program. However, they have a, basically a full-time position at staff that deals with the historic. Anaheim has over fifteen hundred properties on their historic registry, so quite a few... Anaheim has over 1,500 properties on their historic registry, so quite a few, and there's about 700 of those have Mills Act, so not every, like here, not everybody has the Mills Act that's on the registry. Anaheim does it a little differently. They have an annual inspection that they do, and so the homeowner does participate in a, a small fee for that, I think it was like $100 or something, and it's pretty much a windshield kind of a survey where somebody goes by and just makes sure the house is still standing and, you know, it's being maintained and nothing drastic has happened to it. They have a very robust program there, they really encourage people to put it on, they're very pro-preservation. A little history in Anaheim, many, many years ago, they were redoing their downtown and they just wiped out a lot of stuff, and there was a huge backlash about that. And so they, they, I think they've, they've sort of tried to bend over backwards to correct that at this point and preserve what's left. And so they, the gal spent quite a bit of time on the phone with me, telling me, you know, a lot of detail, and I can type something up like Larry did and pass that on to you. But I thought they had a good point in that they did a inspection, I'm not sure we would need to do an annual, but, you know, maybe once every three to five years, something like that. And I don't want to add anything to the code enforcement, I don't know who would do that necessarily, staff-wise, but I think that is probably a good feature, and even if, you know, I think a homeowner would be willing to pay for that if they were on the registry, some nominal amount, as long as it wasn't crazy. But very interesting that neither of those cities charges the homeowners anything at all to, to get the Mills Act or to be on. I, I think, I shouldn't say that, I think Anaheim had a small, like a recording fee or something that they paid, so it was under $100.
They also make you buy the square.
Oh, yes, Anaheim has, every single property gets a bronze plaque similar to the ones we have designed. The homeowners do have to pay for that, and I think that was like $365 or something, but they're all happy to do it because they're, they're getting the plaque on their house. So, they've had nobody, you know, push back on that, they're all very proud of their plaques. But I do think that's a nice way that they've handled that, and they've been very proactive that way.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. See what we learned today? And this is why I asked them, as far as putting in, as far as our meeting with the city manager and our executive director planning next week, that we have something to show her and what we did find out. Does she not live in Anaheim?
Well, I, I heard a rumor that the city manager lives in the colony in Anaheim.
She lives in the colony.
In the colony in Anaheim, which is a historic neighborhood similar to Floral Park.
Okay. I'm sure she's going to be helping us with this, for sure, I hope, at least, okay? All right, let's get to our public comments. Okay, Robert Hale on the fees, item number six. You can fill out a yellow sheet at any time that you wish to speak. We're not like the city council, if they bring up the item, you can't speak, you have to give a sheet before. Man, didn't know that one. But anyway, anytime if you hear something, you know, fill out a sheet, come on, we welcome your comments, we do. We're, we're an open place here, okay?
Good afternoon, esteemed council members and neighbors. I'm a local resident in West Floral Park, familiar with Phil and a few, few folks. I bought in 2017 a proper Roy Russell property that I bought with a specific purpose of preserving and being a steward of, so part of that component was finding a property that had original windows and siding and character, which I've worked very hard to restore and maintain. My general comment was just that I'd like to become more involved in the historic nature of the community and like to see the Mills Act get some momentum again and, and hopefully I can get my house on it. So, I'm, I'm brief, just wanted to be here and show my support, and thank you all for your efforts in maintaining the historic provenance of the community.
Yes, I'm going to allow Attorney Lisa, can I, can we have some dialogue here since...
Is it possible to ask a question?
Yes, but we're going to leave the speakers in three minutes.
Yes, okay. I just want to ask, is the $10,000 a deterrent to you?
Absolutely, it's a consideration. As the time goes on, if this drags into a year or two or three, then the benefit would outweigh that. If I stroked a check today for $10,000 or for two and a half years, I would probably reap the benefit of that. But initially, when I bought the home, that was at the tail end of that moratorium on the fees, so I was under the impression at the time the fees were maybe a third or so of that amount. So, unfortunately, after I closed escrow and moved in and was about at the point where I was ready to be serious about the Mills Act, that had run out and the fees had tripled roughly, so. I'd like to see them just be reasonable and fair, and I think Phil's idea of a, maybe a yearly or three to five-year review of that, in fact, I'd even be willing to volunteer to help monitor some of that if I could become involved more in the, the committee. Maybe some of the local residents can kind of self-monitor that, or maybe it's something you submit online, a photograph for a couple of years, I mean, I could be helpful with some of the operational side of that.
The fee is not $10,000. Executive Director Lynn?
So, the, the current fee, as we discussed at the previous meeting, we were able to streamline our process, the current fee for the Mills Act, give me one second here, I have it down. So, the current fee for the Mills Act is $3,589.14, and then for self-nominations, it's about the same cost. So, they were reduced quite a bit from what was originally, from last year, so. And we're able to do that through the streamlining of the staff review process.
Might I ask, how many applications you've had?
So far, this year?
The reduced, the reduced fee just took effect.
Yes, I'm sorry, the reduced fee just took effect July first.
Prior to that, how many, I mean, is the reduction, and it's appreciated?
There was a, there was a reduction from the previous, when it was reduced in wave, so. I think there were, we had probably less than 10 applications in the last, since the fee was changed.
I'm a math guy, the numbers don't lie. So, and I, I hope sincerely that the reduced fees help, but I think most of us would like to see it more like it was two, three years ago. You know, I bought the home partly predicated on that, so that was, it's a consideration, it's not a total deal breaker, but would like to have some closure at some point of what is it going to be, is the dust going to settle, or is this going to be a continuous moving target?
Right. And I think our goal is to work with the commission to have a formal process for making those policy recommendations to the city council.
Okay. And one other, just maybe side note, I'll be very brief, would just be to have some more transparency about what the process is. I've spent a lot of time on the Santa Ana website and looking at different things, there's not a very concise roadmap of how to get there that I can determine in terms of how do you do the Mills. So, that may be something that could be incorporated into the website or the society, as a sub, website or something like that. It's just not very clear about what is the process, how do you do it? Everything I've learned has been through interaction with community members and other folks.
Your point is noted, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hale. The next one is, is it Steven or Stefan? Stefan Gorgone?
Steve Gorgone.
Gorgone, okay.
Yes, Gorgone.
It's French.
Gorgone.
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 It's French.
Yeah, there you go. All right. Madam Chair, Honorary Commissioners, my name is Steve Gorgone.
You have three minutes, I'm sorry. Everybody, three minutes, okay?
Perfect. I live at 2556 Valencia Street North in the beautiful community of Park Santiago. I want to thank you for this opportunity to make comment, and I want to tell you I do appreciate what you guys do here. I'm here to speak about the historic resource listing fees, we feel it's way too expensive and feel that lowering the fees would create a more positive benefit than the property tax dollars that would be in the hands of the city. I work as a teacher in Santa Ana High School and had been wanting to move into the area for quite a while now. My wife and I purchased our current house a little over a year ago, and it's a small old Tudor-style house built in 1927. My wife and I love historic homes, and finally, we found a historic property that we could bring back to its original charm to match the charm that we see in the city and other parts of the neighborhood and the community. Everything we did with that house on its outside, in the renovation process, and in the inside as much as humanly possible, was to make it time-appropriate. And we wanted people, when they looked at that house and when we were in that house, to be reminded of what it would be like at that time, 1927. And I think our, our contractor did a really good job with that. One of the things we had planned from day one with the house was to enter into a Mills Act contract, with the hope that now the original look, or as close to original time-appropriate as possible, it would stay that way as long as possible. Unfortunately, we found out halfway into our project that we weren't on the historic registry, and this adds that expense to the process of getting into a Mills contract. This ultimately led us not to apply for the Mills Act contract since we simply can't afford it on my pay. It's just not possible, it's way beyond what we have. It is our hope that the city will lower the fees for this process to be back where it was a few years ago. $2,000 around for the entire process would be something that we could squeeze by and do. $10,000 or around $7,000, it's just not possible. Really, though, what I want to remind you all is that this is about preservation. When these old houses are the, these old houses are the history of the city in this county. When you have individuals like us willing to keep them original and spend our money to bring them back to their original charm, this is important to the city, I feel at least, I hope you agree with me. Before I moved to Santa Ana, I knew of its historic charm, we need to keep that preserved. Now that I'm a member of the community, I am even more so of the belief that we need to keep this preserved. I, the city, I hope, should want to increase its property values by having more houses on the historic registry and on the Mills Act contracts. Having more houses historic and having these houses preserved by the homeowners makes the city more valuable, increases the home values, home sale values, bringing more property tax revenue to the city. I hope you, I urge you to listen to these comments and hopefully you guys move in the positive direction for us all.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. Does our light work?
There's no lights.
No, the lights don't work, we're using the beeper time.
Oh, okay. I thought it was a cellphone beeping. I'm going, okay? So, we don't have the lights, guys, you know, and so forth? So, if you hear the beeper, that means three minutes are up. If you need a little more time, just look at me and say, uh, and I'll say, okay, all right, all right. Uh, okay. Oh, my goodness, Paul, I think it's Paul. Would you tell me your last name?
Sandra.
I'm so sorry.
It was probably my handwriting.
I just want to take a minute and first of all, thank the commission for all the work it does for the city, Santa Ana and the great work. I have recently moved back to Santa Ana because of the historic value, which is very hard to find. I think it's unique to Orange County itself. Coming from Los Angeles, meet and raise there, I've seen historic neighborhoods develop, and I think that Santa Ana has replicated an amazing job with its historic culture in downtown and what's happened to certain neighborhoods. I've recently moved back to Floral Park, or actually, Jack Fisher Park. I was lucky enough to be able to be awarded a Mills Act on a house in Floral Park back in 2007, and as a recipient of that, I know what it is like to have the benefit for the additional expenses that are required to maintain a historic home. Recently, I just purchased a historically significant home with, from a historical family in Santa Ana, and I've spent about the past eight months painfully renovating that home, and I can tell you the cost, it was interesting when we talked about Fourth Street, I thought that was great. It's easier to tear out the planters than to pull them out and reuse them, and that's exactly what all of us that buy historic homes encounter. I had to, I went to painfully, just one example is to have the casement windows completely sanded down manually at, at $25 an hour in labor with a lot of windows, and have them primed and then re-sanded and primed so that I, and then painted, so that I could keep the original historic value. Believe me, it would have been a lot cheaper to get vinyl windows put in that house and much quicker. So, I do think it's a financial consideration, those of us that do purchase the homes, it is a massive amount of money at today's labor rates to restore. It is much easier, as we all know, due to the international business, to just tear out and put in something inexpensive that replaces, and will get us through five or six years of the time we owned that home. I was shocked to find out, my fee was about $2,500, the group I worked with at the city was amazing back in 2007. I purchased a home and did not know that the fee had gone up to the level it is, I'm glad it's gone down to about $7,000, I'd heard at $10,000, and I thought, oh, good Lord, what is a message to those of us when we were paying, you know, $2,000, $2,500? I've never seen anything that a city government does to raise that sort of percentage, so it was, the message was not, was not very welcome, or welcome meaning, let me say. That being said, I am committed to the historic value, and I do think that it's important that we realize that this fee, depending on it being possibly a young family, an elderly couple, or somebody that's at a different point in their life and may have the time to work on their home because they're home with their children or they are retired, would not be able to step up and pay that sort of money. So, my wish is that you reevaluate it. Yes, I think it's a tremendous financial consideration and is sending a very difficult message, and, and it would be quite sad to me as somebody who appreciates Santa Ana. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Sanford. Next, we have Dale. Ladies and gentlemen, Dale Hevick was honored by the community, community action for his efforts, so congratulations on that.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair and Commissioners, we're celebrating 150 years with the city, and it's not a hard stretch to imagine all the homes that are here that are well over 50 years old. Not everybody can afford the $10,000. There's a lot of homes in, in Santa Ana that people are in probably some very beautiful old homes, but they can't afford the $10,000 fee like a lot of the people maybe up in Floral Park, Park Santiago, wherever throughout the city can. And so that fee, $10,000, $7,000, you know, you mentioned people pay a $100 maintenance fee to go out there. That $100 fee, and if that's all they pay, that lasts them 70 years before they get up to what we have to pay just to apply, you know? So, it's really an unfair balance of funds that are being placed upon certain people in the city that can't afford to do this, that need to get the benefit of the Mills Act and maybe apply that to their improvement of their properties to keep the historical significance of these properties active. It's, it's got to change. We see all around us the changes that are taking place, and the fees are so out of line with everybody that you guys have mentioned, you know? It's just amazing that we can say that this is okay, you know? I just don't understand it. So, I would like to see the fees come down. I have a house in 1936, that was built in 1936, and I'm not on the Mills Act, but, you know, if the fees came down quite a bit, I would probably consider it, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dale. Next is, I hope it's Jane Lewis.
Good evening, my name is Jane Lewis, and I live in Morrison Park. I've been doing design work in Santa Ana since 2000. I just wanted to give you my perspective on what happens in the design process when properties aren't on the Mills Act. You go through the process, people have the best of intentions, and then they get the bill, and the first thing to go are usually the windows, and if they're not on the Mills Act, then you're looking at vinyl windows versus wood windows. It's a great service to me when you have, when a project is on the Mills Act, and I can say, you know what, you have to do wood windows, it's not my fault, it's the requirement, and it really does bring a benefit to the property over the long-term lifetime of the property, to protect it that way. People do, there's a lot of, it's expensive, and there's a lot of little details that'll get... get lost if they can't be on the Mills Act. It's a service to the city to do that and it's expensive. So, and it's time consuming too with the additional processes, additional months in the planning process and submitting, you know, to the commission for renovations and that sort of thing. So just to help offset that, at least if the initial fees can be lower, then that gives everybody kind of a chance to get their foot in the door. So that aside, a quick comment on the streetcar planters, be careful with the molds. Don't make cheap copies of our beautiful Gucci artwork and we're going to put these cheap copies everywhere. I would say take the artwork, make it something different. Don't just replicate it. I don't want to look at, like we look at the freeway with the little starving artist pictures on the side of that. I don't understand those. Someone thought they looked great in their living room, they don't look so great on there. So that's my two cents. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Connie Major.
Is it evening? Good evening. Connie Major, I'm at 923 North Olive Street. I've been in the city since 1976, been there since 1977. My husband and I did extensive work. It's a Mediterranean home. As other homes got torn down, we were able to salvage and get all the original hinges and doorknobs and we really have our house back together like it was and we're very proud of it. I did a lot of research towards getting onto the Mills Act and did the house next to me on each side because once you're doing that research, it's sort of all there. Might as well get that information too. And we were all going to do it, but the price stopped us very much. We were here in the city during the original Mills Act endeavors and we felt, well, we'll certainly do it when we have time. And I guess we ran out of time because now we can't do it with the price as it is. Would love to be able to get on the registry because I think it does nothing but benefit the city having our homes listed. Had, going through an unfortunate thing right now with a neighbor catty corner to me, they had a fire on North Olive Street. And the insurance company is in charge of hiring the architect and doing all these things. And the architect just blindly said, every window, change out, remove all molding, remove all the roof tile, just stripped the place down terribly. And if it had somehow had something in the city when it went through plan check to say, whoa, wait, this home's from 1924, it might be worth looking at. Maybe we should have the insurance company reevaluate how they're going to do this and get an architect that knows what they're doing. I have worked with the city, the homeowner desperately does not want to change all to vinyl windows and have the mullions between the behind glass and not have the right look to it. So we have to reset, he has to resubmit the whole plans and go through the plan check. It's going to cost him to do that just to save the front facade to not become plastic. So I'd encourage somehow that there gets something in the plan check system to look at the age of the home. And gee, is this home in the Mills Act? No, but maybe it's worthwhile, let's take an extra look at it and not just blanket take this contractor's plans that say, no, 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 windows. So that's a, something I would really encourage, get looked into on another way. And yes, if the Mills Act price gets down, then I know three homes are going to pop on right away. The house that burnt down was a home of the electric company, the big electricians and the, their first name started with F?
McFarland.
McFarland's, yes, it was their home. And so I know it would, would have been able to get on. Its condition now is stripped. It's, it's terrible. Well, there, that was perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Connie. Anyone else? Because that's all the yellow slips that I have. I, we don't know you.
Okay. For those that don't know me, I'm Mark Bocklin.
Just kidding.
And I just want to make a couple of comments. First of all, in your benchmarking, one of the cities that also I actually looked into this past weekend is Claremont, California. Claremont, California has a Mills Act. They have a thousand dollar fee. Where Claremont is a little bit more restrictive is they want the, they want the client, customer, the homeowner to put together a 10-year plan that says, these are the things that they'll do over a 10-year plan. And, you know, so that's how they, and they have to be from an authorized constructor, contractor, et cetera, et cetera. But I also wanted to say that, you know, when you look back on this whole thing, I don't think people understand where we've come from. And that is, is that, you know, back in the early 2000s when the program started, I'm going to guess that maybe, anybody know what the number was that you were charged?
I believe it was $400.
It was $200 and less. That's what you paid for when you got that. And we had one, we had one part-time person, Hallie Sobuleski, that worked on that. And Hallie had a fixed number because I've worked with her every single year. And her fixed number was, I can get about 25 to 30 homes taken care of from historic registry or from, and/or Mills Act. And that was her limit. And then subsequently, Jay Trevino, the planning, planning director at the time, said, we have to get our costs back. And the, and the price went up to 4,000 and then $8,000. And it was 8,000 and going up every year by COLA measurements, which are the cost of living, agree, cost of living pricing. And so the fact is, is that at, at this point in time, we're at $8,000. But we really need to get, staff has to take the commission here and other people in the city and just have to work with them, set some kind of guideline, some kind of deadline that we can sit there and say, we're going to accomplish this by a certain period of time. And if it means putting the burden back on some of the homeowners to do certain things that the city feels that they've been doing now, then let's do it. Because the homeowners, when they get engaged in this process and they start to find out about, you just heard from three people here, four people, that sat there and said, when I found out the history of my home, I really wanted to learn more about it, I wanted to do more about it. And then, and that's what we really have to do. We have to get the homeowner involved in the beginning and we'll get them involved in the beginning if we give them a practical dollar value to do this. And right now, even today, with the $8,000 mark, we're still with part-time people. We don't have full-time people working on this project. We have part-time people doing this and other tasks in the planning department. So we need to look at the costs, we need to agree that these are things that the neighborhoods will take on as a, as a cost or burden. But I think at this point in time, we really need to do something because the message that people are hearing today is the city does not really care about historic. Because they're setting a limit on what we're doing today from a dollar value and therefore, you know, people are discouraged and discouraged to go forward with this from a cost standpoint. Now, I know it ticked off.
That's okay, continue.
One last comment is that, you know, when the, when the fees were reduced to $2,000 back in the 16, 17 timeframe, that was done not to help Floral Park or Park Santiago, that was done in part to make sure that all of the people that lived in Santa Ana that had the historic homes had the ability to do something with their homes, save some money in one respect, but spend some money. And I think that's the last thing I want to say is that overall, when people do historic, we've heard it again from the people here tonight, they spend a fair amount of money to bring their house back to what they believe the historic nature of that home was when it was built. And we need to continue to encourage that, not discourage that. That's it.
You know, I had this item agenda because we wanted to hear, get some kind of perspective of what's going on around us as far as these fees and also to hear your stories, the impact of that, these fees that we have on you. Okay, and also, you know, we have staff that's brand new. And they're coming in and they're fi, you know, they're following different guidelines, whether it's coming in from the planning side of what they own. We do not have the seasoned knowledge as previous employees have so that you come in. So in here, you know, people are getting frustrated with the new staff. They need to know and also to, to understand what are sensitive areas and other things that we can do. So on here, what I do, would like for this commission to do, number one, is that a lot of the things that you're talking about are policy issues. Who makes the policy? Anybody?
Mayor and city council.
That's right. Mayor and city council, our staff cannot do anything. Okay? We cannot do anything. As a commission, according to Division 2.5 of the Santa Ana Municipal Code, outlines the powers and duty of the Historic Resource Commission. These duties include, but not limited to, the following. Advise and make recommendations to the planning commission, city council, and other city boards and commissions regarding historical projects and property. Recommend to the city council policies and regulations regard, regarding the protection, reuse, and rehabilitation of historic, uh, historical property. There is currently no established process for forwarding commission recommendations and/or concerns regarding historical preservation issues from the commission to the city council. Okay? Mrs. Wong, the meeting on Thursday, uh, Wednesday, July 16th, as we're meeting, now that we have, number one, we've had such high-level turnover in our city with city managers that we have a city manager that also lives in a historic area and understanding. And we're going to be asking her for guidance on how we can accomplish some of the concerns that we're listening to you and especially on these fees. Let her guide us through this process. What is the process that we can do to help you get, for us, you know, the community can come in, put more property on the regent to protect our historical, cultural properties that we do have here in the city. And then, what we're doing is also, we're going to be working with staff and I am calling for staff and check your calendars. We're going to have a working session after we meet with the city manager. I'm going to call the commission together and we're going to have a working session taking on her, her recommendations and guidance. And then we're going to come on with some recommendations to the city council. So that is going to be before our meeting of October 3rd?
Yes.
3rd, before October 3rd. Right now, it's a morning work session and I would think about maybe three hours work session or an afternoon work session, what is the pleasure. So that we can give you some dates where it would be either morning or afternoon. So how many for morning work session? Raise your hand.
Do either way.
Do either way. So I have one, two, three, four. How about afternoon? Let's say round about, so we, 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock?
I think that's too late in the day.
Yeah, 4 is too late.
People are out of gas, you know? Do it at 2 o'clock or 1:30.
How about 2 o'clock?
Actually, morning or afternoon works for me.
Okay, what are you saying afternoon? Is it 2 o'clock in the afternoon?
2.
2? 2? 2? 2? Okay, 2. Okay, we'll keep that in mind and we'll give, now is a Tuesday or a Wednesday better for you? How many for Wednesday? When, a Wednesday or a Tuesday?
Either day is fine.
Wednesday would be preferred because Tuesday sometime if we hit city council.
Okay, on a Wednesday? Wednesday, 2 o'clock in the afternoon, we'll give them some dates. Okay? So we're settling that and we're going to be working on that. And we're going to, you know, come back on our October 3rd meeting and then we will have all of this formalized so that it will come as a recommendation and we'll agenda as a recommendation of all of these items to the city council. Okay? Is everybody on board with that? Okay. And do I have any discussion on that? Anybody want anything else added to this? No? Anything? No comments? Okay, so we're all in agreement that it's going to be 2 o'clock in the afternoon on some Wednesday, on the Wednesday, and we'll get this information out to them tomorrow on a couple of dates on tomorrow that we have. Okay?
Tomorrow we're closed.
What, what we'll do is I'll have the secretary contact each commissioners and we'll provide some dates.
Oh my God, I thought you were closed the last Friday.
No, we're closed tomorrow.
Okay. Monday, okay, we will, we will, we will send this out. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
The days that I think you're open, you're closed. I have to mark my calendar on this. Okay. All right? So there, that's what we do. And then we will also be talking about code enforcement also on this and, and then the historic sensitivity of the area. Okay? That's on that. To also give our staffs, you know, help and guidance of what we've gone, because I don't want you to get upset with our staff and I don't want staff to get upset with us. I know you won't, but you know? But anyway, but you know, we need to work together on this since we have no, no process of anything more guidelines to go forward with this. Okay? All right. With that, we're going to move on to our next item. Now we'll move into comments from any of our staff members.
I just want to say thank you for introducing that process. I think that'll be very helpful for the staff because many of the discussion that and concerns I've heard, you know, we need to create and have policy direction, guidance. And really, this will help, I think, all parties to, to help create formal information flow to the council and then get some directive back. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Now we're going to pack for comments from the commission, commissioners. Let's start.
I just have one question. So since the fee has, the new fee been introduced July 1st, what's the city doing to make the residents aware of that new fee? Or what has the city do, or what has the city done or what do they plan to do?
In terms of the, the fee, it is published as part of the budget and what we do is we provide information at the counter on the fee currently. So unless we know there's specific people that wanted to know about the, the fee, generally it's just on our website. So unless there's only anyone specific that wanted to know about the fee, we would send that information to them. We could send that information to them.
So we're never on the proactive side of letting our residents know the reduced costs?
I'm sorry, I didn't get the question.
We're never, sorry, my, we're never on the proactive side of letting our residents know that the fee has dropped, you know, this, this large of a drop?
In terms of the, the way we get information out, I, you know, I'd be more than happy to do that, but to get information out to residents, just on a fee reduction, it's, it's not feasible for staff. But we can publish information through our website and also provide it at the counter information because we do have to post our fees at the counter as well.
Could I, can I ask a question here? Okay, can we give the information to Neighborhood Initiative who can go through the city net?
That absolutely can be done as well.
Okay, talk to Margarita and Scott because of the fact that they send out information and this is a neighborhood issue, okay? They can send it out on that city net, which goes to mobile advices, emails, and everything else. Okay? And, well, that's Comlink. And Comlink will be out there and coming out. And I suggest that, men, you come to Comlink, uh, one of the meetings to go over the new things, maybe in October when we get everything down.
Sure, absolutely. I think after we get some direction back from the council, would be a good time to do that.
Okay, very good. Okay.
I just had one last thing. Does the city keep any type of metrics on? Does the city keep any type of metrics on the demographics of individuals in these homes?
No, we don't, in terms of demographics, uh, but we do have their information in terms of ownership.
Okay.
Commissioner Leo?
I just want to say thank you for creating this process. I think it's key. Um, it, it shouldn't be difficult for homeowners to continue to take pride in their home and, and, um, and be able to showcase it on something like the Mills Act, and I'm excited about the process. And I know, are the emails that go out, the same ones that they're talking about, that have the City of Santa Ana logo? Because I get emails all the time from the city about events, updates, library hours if they change, so I don't know why that couldn't be for this as well. I think it's really important.
We certainly can add, um, to that mass email list as well.
Great, thank you.
Could you share a hand?
Um, I just want to congratulate, this is the time, uh, to person Christie and Vice Chair Shaffer on election, and it sounds like we have some good work ahead of us, some goals that we can accomplish, long-term goals that we're wanting to, to reach and process for. Um, and, and we're able to ask if we have any nominations come through yet for, uh, Historic Preservation Awards, including our best staff. And is, um, putting me a copy of the flyer, since we still have a little time appropriate, uh, through the Neighborhood Initiative. So, I'll go take Margarita on that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, to date, we have not received any nominations. The nomination period does close on July 25th. What staff has done is, um, advertised that the Historic Preservation Program for 2019 Awards Program, um, is up and running, um, on our social medias, and through the email blast that Madam Chair has mentioned through the Comlink, we work closely with, uh, both our colleagues Scott Cutner and Margarita Macedonia, to get that out, get the message out to neighborhood leaders, um, and it included the application and the handout that described exactly what the eligibility requirements would be. So, we've done that, we unfortunately haven't had any nominations to date, but again, there's a couple of weeks left.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Heather Dale?
Yeah, I, I do have a, I'll first have a question, I wonder whether we should vote to excuse, uh...
Uh, we're coming down. We're, we're coming to that.
Okay, well, then, uh, what I wanted to do was just, uh, thank everyone, certainly the staff and members of the commission and, uh, fellow fellow citizens for willing to step back and take a time and overview, and, and I think that's a very, uh, hopeful and useful, uh, useful process of, I'm very, very sensible.
I want to thank you so much for your time and effort on researching, uh, the cities that you have. Commissioner Rush?
Thank you, um, I wanted to thank staff as well. Jeff Dickman and I had a couple of meetings with Candida and Pedro and, uh, Ali of First Staff, and, uh, regarding this issue of historically sensitive neighborhoods, and several other things, so I just want to thank, uh, Candida and her staff for, uh, for making the time to visit with, uh, with Jeff and I. Uh, also, I want to thank the homeowners, who, uh, of course, have mostly scampered away, but congratulations for their, um, for their new designations. Um, I also was going to ask about the preservation awards. I'm disappointed there's not been any submissions at this point, uh, um, I certainly hope that we have, we have some here in the next couple of weeks. Um, and as I think most everybody here knows, the city is in the middle of us gearing up to have a variety of events to celebrate the 150th anniversary of the founding of the city. Uh, as a part of that, I'm going to propose, uh, to, um, Julie Castro Cardenas, who's kind of the main staff person who's leading the charge on that, uh, that one of the, uh, one of the efforts should be a Uncle Billy, uh, look-alike contest, and I want to be the first to nominate Dale Helvig, uh, who I think would make a spectacular stand-in for Uncle Billy Spurgeon. So, uh, I don't know if that was kind of your, your goal when you started growing that, uh, that magnificent, uh, beard that you have, but it occurred to me tonight, when I'm seeing you stand up here, I said, "My goodness, that fellow's a spitting image of, uh, William Spurgeon." So, uh, um, I, I, a more handsome version, of course, but, you know, uh, very, very strong likeness, so, um, anyway, hopefully, we can, at our study session coming up here in August or September, we can make some real headway towards, uh, um, addressing the issues of, uh, codifying how we're going to deal with historically sensitive neighborhoods, so we don't have problems like what happened in the McFarland House, uh, which Connie brought to, uh, our attention, and others. I mean, there's been so many, uh, terrible things that have happened, uh, because, uh, we don't have a process in place, it's, uh, it's disappointing, so, uh, as well as get a handle on really solving the issue of reducing these fees. I mean, it is, i- it's just beyond description how so many communities across the nation can find a way to do it cheaper than we can, so, uh, I'm looking forward to that dialogue and some resolution. That's all I have.
Commissioner Rushi?
I want to thank the staff very much for your hard work. I also want to appreciate the audience for coming in tonight and being well-prepared to talk about the fees. We really appreciate your input. Um, also, I wanted to mention, Larry, that, uh, the website does have a map, if you want to know what the historical property locations are throughout the city. Alberta, we do actually have a small process to get our inputs into the city council, and that's through, obviously, we were chosen to be on this board by city council members and the mayor, so we could always go back to the person that appointed us and give them our input at any time. Uh, Steve, you're absolutely right, the, I've looked at the website tonight, and it used to be a little simpler for figuring out the process of getting put on the, uh, on the, uh, how to get the registry and the Mills Act. It, it looks like when they revamped the website, they've made it a little more overwhelming, of they've added the Historical Preservation Award and a lot of stuff. And there was also, when you clicked on the application, it took you to just the applications for the registry and the Mills Act. Now, it takes you to the entire list of every application the city has for getting even a dog license, so, yeah, maybe we need to go back and revisit it, it's just overwhelming, and it's not linking you to the right stuff. Also, I want to thank Larry and Phil for the outstanding job, the researching the cities, that was very informative. I also want to congratulate Alberta and Phil for your, your, your vote in and your continued leadership, looking forward to that. And I also wanted to ask Candida, the city, Phil and, um, Larry talked about how they interviewed these historical preservationists for different cities. I know that they get together several times a year, and I want to make sure that Santa Ana is still involved in those meetings to gather ideas and, and bounce ideas off of other cities about how to reduce the fees.
Yes, we are. Yes, we are. And we hosted one last year.
Great. That's about it, thank you.
Vice Chair Sheehan?
Um, first, I'd like to thank the, um, all the people in the audience that came tonight and to speak in favor of, uh, reducing the fees. I think it's important for the staff to hear that. Thank you, staff, for your continued work, um, on preservation and, uh, the progress that we've been able to make. Um, just, Min had said he thought there was less than 10 homes that had been, uh, nominated or wanted to come on the registry, since the fee went up to $10,000 approximately, and I believe, I'd asked that question several times, and I've been told there were four. So, in over two years-plus time, we went from over 100 applicants down to four, and so somebody said they could do the math earlier, um, anyway, and Mark McLaughlin said, you know, if we had 30 houses come on at $7,000, um, I just did a calculation up here, that's $210,000. I, I, I'm pretty sure we're not paying our staff $210,000, I know there's more than one person involved in doing that, but I think we would make it up on volume by getting those, you know, numbers back up, uh, versus just the four houses we've had since the fee went so high, and I believe those four people were probably all in Floral Park.
Five.
Five?
Last two years, five.
Five, in the last two years, so, um, clearly, the numbers have dropped off, and we've heard from people in the public saying that high fees are holding them back from applying, even though they want to, and, um, in addition to the people that, uh, spoke publicly, we all also got several emails and letters that were sent in, uh, by people who couldn't be here tonight, and the staff has those as well, so, thank you for your input. Um, regarding the 150th, uh, celebration of Santa Ana, I, um, just want to mention that I think it's next week, or soon, there's a, a street pancake breakfast, that's sort of a reenactment of something that happened, uh, many, many years ago, there's a picture of it in the Fourth Street Market. Uh, does the staff, anybody know the date of that?
I think it's the 20, it's the last Sunday, I'm liking the 28th, I believe it's the 28th.
Of this month?
Yeah.
Yes.
I can speak on that, it's, uh, Sunday, July 28th, 9 to 1.
9 to 1, and where is it?
Fourth Street, between Bush and French.
And tickets?
You can buy tickets online.
You can buy tickets online, I know I got one of those emails from the city, um, and it's on their Facebook and other, uh, Instagram, things like that, so hopefully, you are all following the city on some kind of a method of getting word out, and that would be an excellent way to at least let people know about the fees being at 7,000, which I appreciate, that's less than 10, um, but it's still a big number for an average, uh, family, I think, to, uh, consider putting that on, so I would, I'm hopeful that we can, uh, come to a much, much, uh, more reasonable fee, um, you know, I don't know if we take the average of all the fees we've charged over the years and see where that lands, or how they figure it out, but, um, it just seems very high to me, uh, still. And, um, and I just thank you, uh, congratulations, Alberta, on being re-elected chair, and, um, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Let's go back to item, the excused absence of Commissioner Ramos. Is there a motion?
I move so.
Commissioner Leo? Second. Second, Commissioner Heather Dale, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, 8 to 1, with Commissioner Ramos, uh, uh, absent at that time. First of all, I want to thank the community, your input was so invaluable to us that we can come in and take this to the city manager, so I want to thank you for taking your time from your busy schedules, I'm sure, and to come up, and the other staff members that were here, thank you to our staff, who've got code enforcement here and public work, so they can be, and you guys, your hard work on putting this agenda together for me, I really appreciate that. Um, I want to thank you guys for your continued success, um, not success, well, yes, continued success, but your, um, consideration for me as chair, and I want to, Vice Chair, congratulations on that. Now, also, I want to, you know, we, we talk about our 150th anniversary, but we've had people here who currently have been, you know, heroes, treasures, and one of those had a 24-year legacy in serving Santa Ana's history, and she just stepped down as president of the Histor- Santa Ana Historical Society, and that is Allison Young. Allison Young joined the board in 1995. Historical Society was established in 1974. Uh, she had a background in architectural history and preservation. Uh, one of the things that, uh, that she did was, uh, really involved in is the house of the saving from demolition in 1975, the Adelaide Walker House, and beautifully restored and open to the public. Um, she worked through the county bankruptcy, remember that county bankruptcy, everybody, that we had way back then? Uh, and pushing for the proposed sale of the land under the developer who might not use it as a historic home. She fought that, she organized the community. Um, uh, she, um, one of her, uh, she spearheaded, uh, and created a new 100-year lease for the land for the, uh, I think this was the, with Nathan and Robert, it would lead, the Hellwafel House, is that correct? Uh, Tim?
Yes.
Yeah, the 100-year lease, uh, then she, uh, negotiated an agreement with the city for the Santa Ana Historical Preservation Society to be given salvage right for older city structures for, before demolition, and fought with others to save the historic property, such as the, is it Siemens Building? Is that signed?
Siemens.
Siemens Building, and Pacific Electric Bridge. She helped negotiate federal funds to re-roof and repaint the house for other generation. Um, she also helped to preserve the legacy of the Santa Ana Fire Department in 2013, and if she, if you've ever been on the historical tour, which was started in, uh, the cemetery tour back in 2003, Allison was the one that, uh, co-chaired that, and she also wrote the script for the, um, different students from, uh, the High School of the Arts, who were portraying the characters. Uh, she has been quite, uh, preservationist in our city, and she is a true legacy and treasure for we have. So, uh, I would like to, uh, Historic Resource Commission, that we all thank her for all her work that she has done in preserving the history of Santa Ana. Now, she is going to be still active, but she stepped down after 22 years as president. Can't wait to find out what she's going to do when she retires and everything, but, um, we want to wish her the best, and thank her for thanking so much of, of Santa Ana, that she took all her efforts in preserving our history. So, once again, that's Allison Young that we have, okay? And with that...
Excuse me, I have one thing I'd like to add. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we close out tonight's meeting in memory of Alberta's brother, who passed away recently.
Oh, thank you so much. Uh, yes, my brother, yeah, was, he was a Marine vet, and, uh, I don't know, some of you are too young to remember, but remember over in Vietnam, when the KC-130 and the ASICS collided together over in Vietnam? My brother was pulled from the KC-130 because of passing of my grandfather, his best friend took his place, and he would have perished right then and there. My brother Albert made his decision to save lives, he paid the first fire paramedic in 1970, um, African American, no, we were known as black, let me get it correct, we weren't African Americans during that time, uh, for Inglewood, the South Bay area. He is twice honored with the Medal of Valor from the Fire Department, and he is well-respected, uh, among the fire community, not only in Inglewood, but also LA County, so, but thank you so much, staff, for your beautiful comments and very touching, um, passing of my brother, and thank you for that. Thank you so much. We're only a year and a day apart. My mom kept saying, "It was a war." I'm the oldest. He almost came on my birthday, but she, thank God, she held off. But anyway, with that, I'd like to, uh, um, close the meeting, uh, and, uh, adjourn to our next meeting, uh, to be held on October 3rd. Thank you. Thank you so much.